Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would like to remain standing for the invocation, Peggy Ventress from the Saint Martin of Fields Episcopal Church. She's not answering. Matt.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together, God, to come sit in this divine form, and we ask you to lead us, Heavenly Father, and we thank you, Heavenly Father, for blessing this city, God, and we ask you to continue to walk your words, and we can lead you, God, Heavenly Father, and, God, we thank you, Matt, for all your blessings, and Jesus, Holy Name, so that you may go on to the Lord.
Amen. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please roll call.
Councilmember Ogilvy?
Here.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Councilmember Bildurain?
Here.
Mayor Protem Mintz?
Here.
Mayor Klink?
Here.
Any, uh, we didn't have any closed sessions, so any changes to the agenda?
None, uh, other than Mr. Mayor, uh, the presentation of the introduction to the San Bernardino County Fire Assistant Chief Ron Walls will not be held this evening.
Okay.
Postponed for another day.
All right. All right, announcements, these proceedings may be viewed on demand on the City of Twenty Nine Palms website at www dot two nine palms dot org. They may also livestream this meeting by going on our website and clicking on the meeting agendas link. We have council comments and reports of meeting attended. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, I didn't attend any meetings or anything like that that I can remember or think of, um, but other than that, um, I'm good.
Okay. Councilmember Ogilvy?
Good evening. Um, I attended or participated in the food, uh, distribution, distribution, uh, with Marango Basin Healthcare District, so we helped to make the boxes and stuff the boxes for, um, those who are going through nutritional issues. Also, I participated in the backpack giveaway as Spirit and Truth worship center church to help pass out backpacks to, uh, children in our city. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Bildurain?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Evening.
No meetings, just participated in the T-Bid, um, interviews and, uh, applications. Did that, and that is all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem Mintz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a Zoom meeting, uh, for the, uh, Mojave District air quality, and, uh, next month, I think I'm just gonna go. They, it's a little bit difficult to participate continuously on Zoom, um, but they did have some questions about, um, the charging station that we have, because we, presently, we don't charge for them, and some cities are wondering if they should charge for the, theirs or not, and I just mentioned that this council decided because we got it as a grant that we don't charge for electricity for the charging, so, and that was really about it, a bunch of housekeeping stuff, so, thank you. That was it.
Thank you. Uh, I was on a Zoom meeting on Friday with the, uh, Mountain Desert Measure I Committee. Um, discussion was on the Barstow, um, um, ridges over, um, train tracks. Um, there's like three of them that they have to get done up in Barstow, so, uh, the Measure I money will be going to them. Um, also, three ninety-five, um, right-of-ways are still being, um, sought after to make that a four-lane highway. Um, that's about all we discussed there. Um, and one more thing, we had a birthday, and by the way, I'd like to wish everybody in, uh, Marango Basin, especially Twenty Nine Palms, uh, happy birthday in August, and we do have two council members that celebrated yesterday, Steve and Mac, so guess what? Singing mayor's gotta sing you happy birthday, everybody can join in too, all ready? Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, dear Steve and Mac, happy birthday to you, and many more.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the City Council. City Council in its capacity as successor agency to the former Twenty Nine Palms redevelopment agency and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately by the City Council. The public will be given an opportunity to comment on consent calendars, items prior to the City Council action. Do I have any council members wishing to, um, pull a consent calendar item? Do I have anybody in the audience that wishes to comment on any consent calendar item? Seeing nobody running up to the podium, bring it back for possible...
I move that we accept a consent calendar. I only have one warrant to abstain from tonight is zero eight two five two zero, uh, Project Phoenix, Conflicts of Injuries. Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Mintz and seconded by Councilmember Ogilvy. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Bildurain?
Aye.
Councilmember Ogilvy?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Mintz?
Aye.
Mayor Klink?
Aye.
Approved, five oh.
Okay, public hearing. Uh, adoption of SB seven forty-three vehicle miles traveled policy guidance. The City Council conduct the public hearing, consider public comment, find a project exempt from CEQA pursuant to section one five zero six one B three, and recommend approval of policy guidance implementing SB seven forty-three vehicle miles traveled. Travis?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So what is SB seven forty-three? This is a Senate bill that changes the way transportation impacts or analyzed in the California Environmental Quality Act. This new approach is called vehicle miles traveled, uh, to measure these impacts, and that's versus the old way it's done, which is level service approach. Uh, this applies statewide on July, uh, first, twenty twenty, and cities are required to adopt guidance on how to implement VMT. Uh, so basically, VMT measures the trips and trip lengths, uh, of any, you know, new major project. It's intended to be a little less car-centric and factor in other modes of transportation, uh, that are pertinent to a project, whether it's walking, bicycling, or transit. It's in line with the state goals to reduce greenhouse gas, encourage infill development, which we track to here in the City of Twenty Nine Palms, as well as improve public health through more active transportation through, such as our trails in the city. Uh, simply put, it measures the impacts of driving versus impacts to drivers. Uh, level of service, like I say, is a current way of measuring, uh, uh, traffic impacts. It looks at a variety of things such as performance measures for speed, density, congestion, delay, safety, et cetera. And the final result in that kind of study is a, a grade essentially, kinda like, uh, what you got in grammar school. Uh, everything from A, which means it's a high quality of service, no delays, traffic free-flowing, uh, all the way down to an F, uh, very congested with traffic jams, uh, especially, uh, hard to merge into new traffic, that sort of thing. Uh, but at its face, or you're kinda taken to extreme, uh, this is level service A, and, uh, that's considered success, and that's level service F, and that's considered failure. Uh, obviously, we, we definitely want an active city and an active downtown, and, uh, so these, these old ways of measuring just, um, you know, kinda run counter to that. So like I said, general problems of level of service is it's car-centric, doesn't factor in other modes of transportation. It can actually increase congestion through promoting sprawl because the outlying, uh, projects score better than the in-line projects where there's more traffic, and it's a little bit unfair because that project that pushes the level of service down below a certain threshold ends up paying for the cumulative effects of all the previous projects. So that's, you know, some of the, the problems with it. Generally, though, level service in Twenty Nine is not a problem. Uh, most of our streets are functioning at a level service A or B. Uh, some cities have thresholds that you have to maintain a C or better. We do not, and our rush hours are generally not congested. Uh, some of our intersections were, that were problematic, Lear, Adobe, and Utah Trail have all been upgraded and signalized, you know, within the last, uh, year and a half, two years. So some of the benefits of VMT is it more closely correlates with the CEQA analysis that already uses VMT, uh, such as air quality, greenhouse gas, energy uses. It's easier to assess, uh, case law supports it, also streamlines infill development, and the reason for that, you can screen out a lot of projects from even having to do the study in the first place because they meet certain criteria. Uh, and it's less costly. I'll put a caveat there, except when Route sixty-two is involved, and that's because that's obviously Caltrans, uh, owned and operated, maintained, uh, so in certain situations, especially near their signalized intersection, they will still require a level of service. So, um, anywhere, uh, throughout the city, it's our call. Obviously, we would consult with the city engineer, uh, about a specific project, uh, you know, before requiring to go to that level. Uh, some of the challenges, Twenty Nine Palms, uh, for VMT is by nature, we're a rural area and we're more spread out, we're less compact, we're less dense, so it's harder to reduce VMT. Uh, we don't have a, you know, major urban core like, say, in LA or San Diego. Our transit options are limited, and our main street is a state highway. Uh, but the benefits here are that most of our commercial development is infill and can be screened out, uh, and a, a good example is the O'Reilly's Auto Parts, which recently approved. Under VMT, they would be screened out, would not have to perform any analysis, uh, under that change. Uh, and we generally do not have any large developments or subdivisions where VMT would, would kick in. Uh, I mentioned the screening, uh, criteria. Again, we're, we're, uh, following, uh, the state, uh, guidance, uh, trying to push it a little bit in, in certain ways, so these are the types of projects that which would be screened out. Those within a half mile of the, uh, MBTA, uh, transit, uh, station there on Adobe, local serving, retail, fifty thousand square feet or less, schools, daycare, student housing, churches, local serving, hotels, public institutions, and affordable housing. Uh, the other criteria is projects that generate, uh, two hundred and fifty trips per day. Um, state kinda set a, a criteria of a hundred and ten, uh, but we feel in a rural area, we could certainly bump that up and pass that on. So basically, bottom line, how are we gonna do this? What's our threshold? Uh, these are some of the options from, uh, OPR, uh, that we're giving us. Uh, the first two really are just too difficult to meet in a rural area, uh, to reduce fifteen percent below existing, uh, especially as spread out as we are. The third option, the ones that makes much sense, and the one that we're recommending uh, this evening, uh, is better than general plan build-out. So most of our projects would come in less than our general plan build-out. Uh, the other option, better than existing, is one that we considered, uh, but we feel like, um, it's least impactful for new development to go to option three. And so for that, uh, we're recommending, uh, approval to City Council, uh, for the adoption of this policy guidance. Uh, it was presented before the planning commission as well, and they recommended approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Travis. Any, um, questions for Travis? Hearing no questions. I'm gonna open this hearing up to the public and ask the public if anybody would like to talk about, uh, item number eleven, or if there are any questions. Seeing nobody coming to the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council for further discussion, possible motion.
I agree for motion, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, a motion that we adopt, uh, SB seven forty-three with option number three.
Second. I have a motion from Mayor Protem Mintz and Councilmember Bildurain to adopt the, the adoption of SB seven forty-three with, uh, number three.
Councilmember Bildurain?
Aye.
Councilmember Ogilvy?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Mintz?
Aye.
Mayor Klink?
Aye.
Approved, five oh.
Discussion potential action items, number twelve, tourism business improvement district T-Bid.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council. Uh, just pulling up the item in front of you right now, and, uh, just a, a few opening remarks, and what I'll do is ask Brianne to come up to talk about, uh, the T-Bid budget. Uh, it's a big budget, okay, there, it's finally loaded. So, uh, the staff is recommending tonight that the, uh, council adopt the resolution that confirms the, uh, the intention to levy an assessment for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and actually, um, we're in fiscal year twenty, that, one correction to that recommendation, it's twenty twenty-one. Um, so it's an intention to levy. So this meeting tonight, if you approve the resolution of intention to levy, uh, the next meeting that we'll have will be the meeting to actual, it'll be a public hearing to levy. Uh, within the resolution, it, it talks about, um, a, uh, the, the meeting, the public hearing, and I guess my question to the council initially is, um, you know, are you available, I may have to change the meeting date, uh, next meeting, September eighth, to the following week, maybe the Wednesday, September eighth, uh, fifteenth, if the council is available. I know, Mr. Mayor, you're kinda, um, going out of town right around that timeframe, if you're still there, and the reason I'm asking for that change is, given the, the very limited time that we have to notice it, it has to be in the paper, seven days, and the paper only runs once a week, so we're, uh, we're gonna miss Wednesday, which is tomorrow, um, just because you're gonna be considering this resolution of intent to levy tonight. Uh, so the earliest it can go in the meeting, in the, uh, paper is next Wednesday, um, so seven days would be past Ju-, uh, September eighth. So that's why the, uh, staff is, you know, asking to see if the council can meet September sixteenth, which is a Wednesday, same time, six o'clock?
I'm, I'm all right.
Okay. So, so with that, there will be, you know, one change in the resolution, it's item number eight in the resolution establishes the September sixteenth as the meeting date, if everybody is okay. Um, apologize for that, um, timing issue, uh, we are gonna cancel the meeting September twenty-second, um, uh, otherwise, we would've probably had it on, on that meeting, so. So yeah, this, so this meeting would be the intention to levy. Uh, the additional item, uh, over and above that resolution is approving the marketing plan. Um, uh, Brianne will be here this evening, is here this evening to present that. The T-Bid Board has already approved that. It starts the process of re-adoption. Assuming that, uh, we go through the process of re-adoption, this would be year number four for the T-Bid, uh, which there has been success through that timeframe. We are in the eighty-nine, there's two versions of the T-Bid, eighty-nine and ninety-four. Eighty-nine, we gotta go through the process annually, so that's where we're at this evening, each and every year. At some point, we, we may, don't have to, we may, uh, mature into the ninety-four, and the ninety-four is blocks of five and ten years, but right now, we're in the eighty-nine version, which is annually. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Brianne just to kinda talk about, uh, the budget. And Brianne, you could sit here, we could drive it, and I'll just sit there.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for having me. Um, I'm gonna take you through a really quick, um, kind of overview to share some of the highlights of our current year, um, and then provide an overview of our plan and budget for next year. Um, so, and these days, our website, visit two nine dot org, um, continues to be our most powerful marketing tool, and we have invested a lot in this site. Um, we had worked for, from October through to mid-March in this year with, uh, a firm called J and S Next that's helping execute a variety of search engine optimization and search engine marketing programs that have been extremely successful in driving more traffic to the site, um, but I think what's most encouraging is beyond the paid traffic that we're getting, we've been able to increase the organic traffic by sixty percent year over year, which is really significant, um, and we've also been able to make grounds in our target markets such as LA, San Diego, Las Vegas, Phoenix, I could go on. Um, so again, we saw really steady momentum building, um, throughout our year, um, and of course, as we'll, you'll hear more about, um, the, the ongoing pandemic has certainly changed a lot of things for us. Um, so I just wanted to highlight, year-to-date, uh, we've had over fifty-one thousand unique users to our visit two nine dot org website, um, so over sixty-one thousand sessions and over a hundred and seventeen thousand page views. Um, I think another part of our success with these marketing programs we've run this year, um, is the number of outbound link clicks. So when you come to the Visit Two Nine site, of course, you're gonna read about all these different things to see and do, um, our goal is, we want you, the site user, to then leave our site and go directly to the individual businesses sites here, specifically our lodging partners. So year-to-date, we've tracked over ten thousand outbound link clicks, which is great, so that's, um, just something to highlight there. Uh, keeping with some of the digital marketing programs, um, we ran consecutive digital display banner ads, um, throughout the year, or again, until mid-March, um, and for the first time ever this year, we launched, uh, a campaign into some markets in Western Canada, in the provinces of British Columbia and Alberta, which is pretty exciting, big accomplishment for us to kind of, again, keep building the momentum and, and expand our reach. So those digital display campaigns generated one point six million impressions, so that's how many times a Visit Two Nine ad was loaded on somebody's screen or device. Doesn't mean they clicked on it, but it's out there, um, so we're certainly, uh, working hard to increase awareness and exposure for the city. Um, in terms of paid search, that's another, uh, critical marketing program that we executed throughout the year, um, and that's just helping increase our site's visibility when people are at home, you know, hitting Google searches, and I think there's three point five billion Google searches done every day, um, so it's critical that your site kind of shows up in, in the high, high order there, um, so you'll see our results, just over three hundred thousand impressions with that. We had a busy fall, we sponsored a whole lot of events, including the Pioneer Days Parade, which was really fun, that was a first for the T-Bid. Um, if you remember, we set up a float to kind of look like a hotel room, we had a good time. Um, and then, come the winter season, uh, we hosted our first ever dine-in Two Nine Restaurant Week, which I'm thrilled to see us get started with. I think, you know, participation was a little bit lower than we had hoped for in our first year, um, but we're, we'll definitely bring this back again, uh, this coming January. So the month of January is considered California Restaurant Month, so Twenty Nine Palms was one of forty participating destinations across, um, the state that engaged. So of those six participating restaurants, um, we saw over three hundred special menu, uh, special offer, excuse me, or menu items redeemed, had really great engagement on social media, and it also drove a lot of unique, uh, page views to our site, so we'll look forward to bringing that back next year. Um, I just wanted to highlight what we did with print advertising, 'cause I think it's a nice, um, uh, a nice new partnership, I guess, the T-Bid working closely, um, with the city, so together, we were able to, um, get a full-page print ad in the MCCS guide, which you see here, uh, and, uh, really beautiful-looking athletic field banner, so I think, um, it's just, uh, a great partnership we're building here, it's great to work together, we thank you for these opportunities, for sure. Um, and so just lastly, in terms of looking at this year, uh, this is pretty exciting for us, we're in the final stages of, um, just working through the details, so we will soon be launching, um, a partner program. Um, really, as we approach our fourth year of operation, we're really looking for new ways to bring in more of our local business community, um, offer them opportunities to gain more exposure through a lot of the, uh, marketing programs that we run throughout the year. So we are gonna start sort of small for the first year and focus on, um, benefits that are mostly tied into increasing, uh, exposure on the Visit Two Nine site, um, more exposure through what we're doing in social media, um, we'll offer some unique, uh, visitor center display opportunities once we reopen, uh, and also provide some media and PR support, so, um, we'll be happy to share this program with you once it's finalized, probably in the next week or so. Uh, and again, the, the, the mission with this program is to, again, just be able to, uh, pull in more of the hospitality-focused businesses and allow them to benefit more from what we're doing. Um, okay, I thought, you know, maybe we'll take a quick second to just, uh, share kinda some of, um, what we've been working on since this pandemic took over. Of course, as you can imagine, when the state home order went into effect, we halted and paused all of our advertising programs, um, suspended contract services, voluntary furloughs, canceled a bunch of different, um, advertising campaigns that we had set up, and so our focus really shifted, um, uh, pretty abruptly, you know, and wanted to utilize our social media channels to really help share, um, as much as we could, state and county health department updates, industry guidance, things like this, um, and, you know, as we approached Memorial Day, and then as we got into June, where leisure travel was, was approved, and there was a lot more activity, um, we have really taken a lot of the material Visit California has put out that, that has to do with, um, responsible travel, um, and, and really have been trying to do as much as we can to promote safe and responsible travel, um, and so you'll find a variety of different resources now on the Visit Two Nine site, including the Responsible Travel Code, a set of tips and, um, less resources, all kinds of great information, um, that we are seeing engagement, people are finding these pages on our website, which I think is great, 'cause again, I think that's a big goal for us, um, and a responsibility as a tourism organization to really focus on, um, everybody's safety. So I'll, um, take you through next, a quick overview of the marketing plan and budget for next year. Unfortunately, we're gonna carry on the topic of COVID nineteen and, uh, its impact. Um, when you look at the impact on a national level, level, excuse me, it's, um, quite severe, uh, the US travel industry is anticipating a forty-five percent decline by the end of the year, and, um, that will lessen a little bit as we move forward, um, but again, a lot of variables, a lot of unknowns in terms of what, uh, the future of travel and tourism looks like. Um, so we are seeing now, uh, some positive news from the US Travel Association, um, you're seeing, uh, a June forecast that's actually pretty positive, it's showing a lot of growth in a lot of different, um, travel segments, uh, starting in twenty twenty. Uh, taking a look at how this has impacted us here in Twenty Nine Palms, uh, in our third quarter, April to June, we were down fifty-four percent versus last year, um, we're anticipating a forty percent decline, July to September, which would, um, end our year, our current year, um, down about twenty-seven percent. So as we do our best to kind of follow, um, forecasting trends and, you know, really study our own results, um, we've tried our best to put a forecast together for next year, um, which, which would give us about a, you know, very modest six percent rebound compared to this current year, um, and as we get to the budget in the end of this, you'll see, we've really factored in, um, how should you say, um, you know, uh, like some safe space, some, a buffer, if you will, I'm sure there's another word for it. Um, so again, you know, we're optimistically hoping that we will, um, improve, you know, see improved results starting next year, and that we'll be close to about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in terms of revenue. So every year, as we update our marketing plan, we certainly update, um, the market area overview analysis, which you'll see here is as of August twenty twenty, um, and this breaks down hotel properties, hotel rooms, we've added RV spaces this year, since we've got a very significantly sized RV park here, um, as well as vacation rentals. So as you can see, um, Twenty Nine Palms continues to be the market leader when you look at traditional lodging, hotels, hotel rooms, um, with the hundred and fifty-five plus RV spaces here, um, where we have fifty-two percent of that inventory in the area, uh, but of course, when it comes to short-term vacation rentals, um, we are continuing to be outpaced by the neighboring communities, so as it is today, um, we have about three percent of all of the vacation rentals that are in the Marango Basin. So some of this comes from, um, a reporting site called AirDNA, so just to clarify, Marango Basin would be, um, the unincorporated parts of the basin that you don't see listed here, you've got Pioneer Town, of course, Yucca Valley, Joshua Tree. The nine two two seven seven zip code, again, comes from the AirDNA report that doesn't recognize the city district or city boundary, so that just gives you a sense of what is nearby in our area here. So when we, um, look ahead to our fourth year, um, we talked a lot about, uh, goals and objectives, and, um, really feel that promoting safe and responsible travel needs to be the top priority, um, and that's probably gonna be the case for some time to come. We did make a couple additions to what we look at as key destination pillars, the kinda key reasons people wanna come here. Um, we've added culinary, which I think is important, we've got a lot of really great restaurants, as I said, we're gonna bring Restaurant Week back, um, and we've also added astronomy. I think there is, uh, significant interest in stargazing and astronomy, we have both a observatory, um, and an astronomy club that provide really great experiences, um, so that's, um, again, a, a new kind of pillar we're gonna add in and, and keep track of for this coming year. Um, of course, everyone's budgets are gonna be a bit tight, so we're gonna look to leverage, um, any and all partnership opportunities that are available through our tourism partners, whether that's San Bernardino County, or the Greater Palm Springs CVB, or at a state level with Visit California. Um, sustainability will, will continue to be a key area... Sustainability will continue to be a key area of focus for us, and there's a couple parts to this. First is, you know, kind of big picture, establishing 29 Palms as a place that does care for, supports, and protects its people and the planet. I think there are already some interesting sustainable hospitality initiatives happening in the city, and we can do more to celebrate that and hopefully encourage others to adopt some of those practices. And as you read on here, we also want to work more closely with not only the National Park Service, the Park Association, Leave No Trace Center for Outdoor Ethics. As we know, when peak season hits traditionally, you know, with big crowds, we'll see what happens. You know, there is potential, you know, sort of risk to our natural and cultural resources here in the area. So anyway, we can be a better partner to the National Park and the public lands and find ways to just, again, help kind of better educate the travelers coming in. And then lastly, something we, as the T-Bid group, have talked about for a little while now is this idea of an expansion. So our district is currently the city boundaries. And so as, you know, you saw the market overview, we've got lots of hotel rooms, lots of RV spaces, and not very much in terms of short-term vacation rentals. So we're going to do some research. We're going to look at what this could mean for us if we did expand our district perhaps to the east. How many vacation rentals would that pull into the district? What would that do in terms of T-Bid revenue collection? How could that help better fund programs that we want to tackle in the future? Something we'll do, as I said, more research on. We're not really making any changes when it comes to target markets and demographics. That's all really kind of carrying forward, of course. Right now, we're not doing any targeted marketing. When the time is right and we'll resume some of those paid campaigns, it's really going to be all about drive markets, right? And that is within the state of California and then in our neighbors in Arizona and Nevada. And should we get to a place where we can look at short-haul domestic markets, then we certainly will. So, you know, as we know, our leisure travelers are families, couples, groups, multi-generational travelers. You know, I think there's, you know, there's a lot of research coming out right now in terms of, again, COVID, excuse me, impact and who is traveling and who's not traveling. And I was just reading something from Visit California, I think yesterday, you know, that suggests a lot of families will probably travel more than they have before. Families with young kids who, like myself, will be stuck on Zoom for hours. And I think it's, we're all going to need a break from screen time. And I think that our city offers a really great sort of escape and retreat and great opportunity for families who need that kind of break. And when it comes to marketing programs, a very short list compared to, say, this year. And we will just continue to track our quarterly T-Bid revenue very closely. And, you know, if opportunity presents itself where we can expand and, you know, pull back in the iHeartRadio or the digital billboards or things, we certainly will. But we're just going to focus on those core five programs. Which leads us over to the budget. So I'm sorry if this is a bit tricky to look at on the screen. Cindy Kaye did an amazing job to help with this. So if you ask me, it's a beautiful budget, which you can't see very well right now. You'll see tracked at the bottom are surpluses from the first two years. And you'll see we've set our budget for this year for $178,000, and our expenses are set to $127,000. So we've kind of, again, a lot of unknown in terms of what our next year is going to look like. Will we go back into stay-at-home orders or things as such? I think, you know, we're really fortunate that visitation to the National Park is steady. We have the benefit of the Marine Base that helps drive room demand. So I think we're faring so far better than many other destinations, especially in California. But a lot of unknowns there. So that's why we wanted to put, kind of really try to keep our expenses low, be optimistic with what we'll bring in terms of revenue, and that'll give us a little bit of, I guess, wiggle room and allow us throughout the year to kind of curb expenses as needed. That's a quick overview. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brianna. Anybody have any questions?
I don't question. I just want to just remind everybody that this is where this tax is actually coming from.
Sure. Everything that our Tourism Business Improvement District does is funded by a 1.5% tourism tax that's collected at all of the hotels, motels, and short-term vacation rentals within our city boundaries.
Thank you. I just want to make sure the folks listening don't think this is a new tax we're putting on them.
No new taxes.
Anybody else? Anybody in the crowd there want to get up and ask questions? Okay, we'll bring it back to council and... Discussion, motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and just, you know, one, just correction in the resolution, which is on item number eight, that the public hearing will be scheduled for September 16th.
And the resolution number? 2015. Okay. Any more discussion or motion?
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2015, confirming the intention to levy an assessment to fiscal year 21?
2021.
2021, and then also approve the annual report, marketing, plan, and budget.
As amended, because we amended item number eight.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Wright and seconded by Councilmember Bildurain and O'Gilvie, that we adopt Resolution Number 2015, confirming the intention to levy an assessment for fiscal year 2020, 2021, and approve the annual report, marketing, plan, and budget with the amended number eight. Roll call.
Councilmember Bildurain?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Gilvie?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Mitz?
Aye.
Mayor Klink?
Aye.
Approved 5-0.
Number 13, the 2020 Pioneer Days update. The City Council approved the alternative activities planned for 2020 Pioneer Days due to that bad word restriction imposed by the state of California and the county of San Bernardino.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In the current environment that we're in, we wanted to communicate what our Recreation Department is planning for Pioneer Days. So this is Miniteri and Mrs. Benton will be here this evening to give an update. Please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. What you have before you is my planning thus far for the 84th Annual Pioneer Days Festival. The dates are still scheduled for the 15th through the 18th of October. The theme is Rediscovering Our Pioneer Past. And the grand marshal is Frank Buckley. He is a news anchor for KTLA, graduate from 29 Palms High School, grew up here in 29 Palms. So what I have before you is alternative events for Pioneer Days. At this point, we cannot celebrate in our traditional Pioneer Days manner. And what I mean by that is far as social gathering, so having a carnival, having the festivities that we normally have at the park, bands, food vendors, toy vendors, games, Children's Day, all the things that draw big crowds, a parade. Unfortunately, at this point, that's not an option. I've reached out to San Bernardino County Fire Marshal's Office as currently, right before the meeting, I reached out to them one last time to see if anything has changed. And they're still not accepting special event permits. They cannot provide me with a future date as to when they will. So the alternatives are, we can still do an art contest and do the buttons for Pioneer Days. We can have a grand marshal and historical Pioneer Days video that we can play during the four days of Pioneer Days. We can put it on our city website, put it on Facebook to get people to participate and view the video. Scavenger hunt, a community scavenger hunt, and that would get community members out on their own. We can, we'll provide a list of different locations and clues. The community members that decide to participate will go out, find those items or places throughout the community, rediscovering or discovering 29 Palms again, and submit their answers to... We'll have multiple locations where they can submit their answers. All the answers that are completed at 100% will be, or 100% correct, we'll put them in for a drawing. The other items, we could do a virtual Miss and Master pageant. So it would work the same, except it would be virtual. We would also offer Pioneer Days Grandma and Grandpa, which would work similar to the Miss and Master Contest, but it would be for more senior members of our community. And an alternative to the pet parade, we're thinking a pet look-alike, I don't want to say look-alike contest, but look-alike contest. So we can do that. And then we have some coloring activities, social media posts throughout the four days. So just looking at some alternative ways to celebrate.
And Christina, you've had a planning committee that's been meeting periodically. That's been kind of weighing into all this, right?
Yeah, so we, you know, everybody's waiting. We still have the carnival booked. In fact, I spoke to Don Maurer last week. We're currently the only event still on their books for the remainder of the year. From what he said, he would be really surprised if I'd be allowed to have it. But he didn't, he's not canceling me because I haven't canceled him, so we're trying to work together. But yeah, it doesn't, that actually happening doesn't look all that bright.
All right. Any questions for Christina? Anybody out in the audience wish to ask questions? Okay. If you would come to the podium, please.
I was going to save this towards the end, but it goes right-hand and half with everything that's taking place right now. Now, who's advocating for it?
Ryan, Ryan, can you state your name for the books?
My name is Ryan Palmer. I came to 29 Palms, California in 2004, raised kids here through 29 Palm High, Sidewinders Elementary. They moved on to CMC, went to COD. So I've been a member of this community for a long time, just a quiet voice that says back, listen, observes, and watches things take place. I'm curious now what our council is doing. You know, I come from a place called MoDOT County. Pretty big on the media as far as some decisions that are made there, some leadership that takes place, phenomenal sheriff up there. When I consider this community, you're talking 84 years. For 84 years, we've practiced and participated in the roots of this community, the Pioneer Parade, and the different festivities. As we continue to allow ourselves to get further and further away from our roots and the morals, the values, the principles that we were taught down these communities, we're just moving ourselves closer and closer to the desensitization that's taking place. So when you say things like, "I contacted the fire marshal and I don't think I'm getting the support." My challenge is for leadership here. Who is advocating with you and who's standing up to back with you and say, "Hey, look, there are some things in this community, in this area, okay? Before you come to 29 Palms, you got to make sure you hydrate. There's just certain things that you do to take care of yourself and this environment." So, Mayor Klink, earlier you mentioned the fact that we're in a rural community, that we're kind of spread out, we're not necessarily that urban. So when it comes to the VMT and some of the different criteria and mileage that we're considering for, do we consider mileages? Is this a project? Are we going to start managing this level of detail in the way that we're moving in our congested streets or non-congested streets? I throw back to you the same thought. We're a rural community, we're spread out, we're not in the urban. We're out here in 100-degree weather. My peers are sitting over there at Denny's outside, not enjoying the AC, not getting a little bit of time off from the time they're taking out there in the desert in the training. The officers and the EMTs and the different folks that are out there in the heat and dealing with this day-to-day. Who is out there saying, "You know what? I've got a unique community, low-risk, a lot of healthy folks out here, a lot of stout, hard folks out here. And ultimately, we're not necessarily in as bad a boat as some of these other counties. And oh, by the way, we want our community to look at each other, to smile at each other, to look in the eyes, and to socialize with one another like the good Lord intended us to do." So I'm curious, is there a way to submit a waiver? Because in my business as an analyst, when you see a policy that you can improve, cheaper, coster, safer, more efficient, we have what we call a waiver, but we submit a deviation. So I'm sure there's some method to the madness in there, and whether we're not networked in properly, have we linked up with some people from MoDOT County that might be able to give you a little information? I pose the challenge to the council and our leadership is, what can you do to improve the quality of our lives right now? Not worried about the future, not worried about events that are taking place in the future, but ultimately, where did my movie in the park go? Where is the just getting out there and being able to play in those toys right out there in the gravel, right in Muggie Park? Why is that fence off? I could fry an egg out there on the metal on that. But, you know, my kids can't go out there and play on the metal. And if we can cut grass, and we can trim trees, and we can hang signs up there that says, "Stay off the equipment," I could give somebody a five-gallon water jug to take around with some bleach water and periodically spray that equipment down if you wanted to. So all in all, ladies and gentlemen, I'm the new guy here, first night here, first time at the podium. I'll say my piece with that. I'll sit back again quietly as an introvert. I'll observe, but I will expect to hear some feedback and start seeing some things take place that start bringing a little more morale to our community and start uplifting us versus this compliant, complacent, "Okay, we'll do what we're told, we'll do what's said." Hey, that's right, obey the law. But stand up, challenge, submit waiver, and seek deviation based on environment and a little bit of science that takes place to say, "You know what? We're not necessarily as high a risk as some of these other communities. Now let's boost back them around and take care of our military base and the ladies, men, and women, children of our community." Enough said.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any more questions for Christina about...
Well, Mr. Mayor, you know, just from the manager's perspective, really appreciate all the hard work that Christina and Carrie and the entire staff have done. And, you know, we do realize the challenged environment that we're in. And so looking at the parameters, the constraints that we're in, they've done a great job of kind of at least putting forward something for the community to have a celebration at this time.
Okay, anybody else? Christina, do you want to say anything else?
Nope. I'm willing to do, you know, whatever we're allowed to do. So, yeah, I'm just, you know, kind of giving you the update where we are. If there's something more you want to add to that, or, you know, if you think of an event or some suggestions that, things that we could be doing to be included, let me know.
I just want to say, this is a good start.
Thank you.
This is a really good start. What I was looking at, and this is just me, as far as with your coloring activity, I just love to see children's coloring on sidewalks with chalk.
Sure, sure.
You know, so then you're not thinking about what are you going to do with the paper, this, that, and the other. The sidewalk is just awesome for them to draw on.
Sure. And we could even do, we have done them before where it's, you know, do your front porch color, your front porch with chalk, and it's submit that. So we could do something like that, not a problem.
Okay. Anybody else? This is just a receive and file?
Yeah, in any direction or anything from the council. So no other comments, we can move on to the next item.
Okay, we'll move on to the next, number 14, Desert One Election. The City Council took action on the upcoming election of District One with the options of appoint to the office the person who has been nominated or hold the election. Cindy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. California Elections Code 10229 provides for the option to cancel an election and to appoint nominated candidates when the number of candidates is not more than the number of offices to be elected. We called a general municipal election on June 9th for the offices of councilmembers for Districts 1 and 2. In accordance to the election code, the nomination period was July 13th and closed on August 6th. In accordance to the election code, the nomination period was July thirteenth and closed on August sixth, per the City of Twenty-Nine Palms Business Hours. Elections Code 10224 states that all nomination papers shall be filed with the city elections official, which is myself, during these regular business hours as posted, no later than the eightieth day before an election. During this period, the fall, the following residents were nominated, or submitted their nomination papers and were eligible to run. In District One, it's Stephen Beldurain, and District Two, Joel Klink and Jim Cruchet. With only one candidate identified for District One, where a seat was scheduled for election in November 2020, Elections Code 10229 of the code allows for one of the following courses of action to be taken by the city council. One, you can appoint to the office the person who has been nominated. Two, you can appoint to the office any eligible voter if no one has been nominated, which is not applicable in this case. Or three, hold the election if either no one or only one person has been nominated. Any appointee to the office which he or she was nominated would be considered to be the same as being elected for a four-year term.
Okay. Any questions for Cindy?
Cindy, has anyone indicated that they're going to run a write-in candidate for this?
We have not gotten any names, no.
Anybody else? I have Jim Cruchet who would like to talk on this agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jim Cruchet from Twenty-Nine Palms, California. And I realize that having one candidate in an election is pretty much of a foregone conclusion. But I think that what the city can do is set a tone, and I think the tone we should set is that we offer every possible opportunity for anybody that wants to run for the election that they can run for the election, whether they do a write-in campaign or not. Now, I realize that there were two individuals that were unable to get the necessary signatures of a voter that was in their district, for whatever reason. But I think if we offer one more time, we sit there and say, "Okay, we, the City of Twenty-Nine Palms, we're gonna run this election. We know that you may want to run a write-in election. I don't know if somebody will or will not." But it sets that tone that we offered every opportunity. And I think what it also does is it would probably dispel any perception, and I want to repeat, perception that somehow Mr. Beldurain is representing District One through a technicality. I don't want that to happen. We can come back and say, "We ran the election, we gave everybody every opportunity, and it went big." The other thing that, if there is no write-in election, then Mr. Beldurain could say, "He got a hundred percent of the vote." And that's always a great thing to have in your back pocket. So, and that's why I would say that whatever the cost is, and I don't know what it would be for going ahead with the election, but I think it is far offset by the fact that we set the right tone in Twenty-Nine Palms. Thank you.
Anybody else? Bring it back to council then for discussion?
Well, I guess that's why I was asking about the write-in, and I was asking earlier about, there's a timeframe still, that what, what is the timeframe that they can still write in, or?
The filing period for writing candidates is September ninth through October twentieth.
And the date that we have to make a decision if we want to appoint without going it, going on the ballot and saving some money?
Seventy-five days, and it's, we're, I believe it's tomorrow when we have to, to submit, I mean, you know, to let them know that this is what we're gonna do. Then we're down to days. To a day. The filing period did end August sixth, and it's been, how many days since then until now? Twenty?
About twenty, pretty close.
For anything to, to take place for, whether it's gonna be a writing candidate or for them to come to me and talk, but no one has, has come up, come forward.
I'm just, I just, it's just weird that they would allow, that they would allow write-in all the way till October, whatever, that timeframe, but yet to put a timeframe on, this is the date that you cannot yet?
Well, it's about printing the ballots, so, yeah, so this week is the week that, that they're gonna start printing the ballots.
This is also the week that they do the random alphabetized, you know, how you're gonna be placed on the ballot as well.
Well, I just, I, I have to say, when I, when I was, you know, in my situation, it was the same, I had, you know, the person, I ran, a person ran against the, writing candidacy against myself, I ran the regular campaign, and I just did it as a regular, and I didn't, you know, there was no, because I, I think because she had filed earlier that there was, that she was gonna do a write-in, that there was, everybody had forewarning. But I, I just, I just got a feeling that it just, you know, just wouldn't quite look, because this is a four-year term, it's for only one of five up here, that, that we should leave it open. That's just my opinion.
That we should leave it open?
Yes.
That we just have the election? And if we didn't have the election, how much money would we save?
I asked, and they can't give us a number. They, they just can't determine that right now.
Yeah, so, and, and just to give a perspective of it, I think the, we spent about $12,000 during the election, so yes, if, if it's not printed, it'll be less than that, but as Ms. Fiesker's mentioned, they couldn't quantify the exact savings, but in a typical year, it's $12,000 in total.
And if we do decide to appoint, then if anybody comes on September seventh saying, "I want to be a write-in ballot," they're, they're told, that it's been taken care of?
Well, we've already appointed someone to that seat, so there will be no election. It's over.
Has anyone found any answers?
Just a tough one. Because in all actuality, by him getting the names he need, you know, that's from his district, or from District One, saying, you know, "We would vote for him, we would appoint him," but then at the same time, I don't necessarily think it should be left up to us. Think the people need to decide. I don't know, it's a tough one. I, I could go either way. You still think about it.
And these, these other two that didn't get the signatures, they were told about the write-in, that they could?
Yes, I did get that option.
And their responses were kind of, no, don't want to do it?
Or they could wait four years and try again.
When I look at it, this, when I look at it, they were given that sheet of paper to get nominations to run for council, and they were not able to do it in the time that was stated.
And then given a supplemental with, there weren't, you know, because people will tell you that they're registered, but then, and then they'll sign the form, and then when it goes back to the register of voters, they turn, it turns out that they're not, or they're not in that district, or, you know, there's various reasons why they don't qualify to be on that paper. So then they're given a supplemental to go out again and get more signatures at that time.
I mean, I, I've, I've had to do that both times I've ran, where I had to go back because of the same thing, people that signed, you know, were not really registered. So that's why I said, "He got the names, and they are all registered voters," that says yes.
He got nominated. This is why districting is not a good thing for this small city. Oh my goodness. Yeah, it is what it is, we gotta face it for right now. So do I have a motion? Any more discussion? Anybody out there wish to comment after we've been talking?
Again, I, I would just reiterate that the cost is negligible, whether he's on the ballot, or Mr. Beldurain's on the ballot or appointed. Again, I get back to the point that, and I'm gonna follow with Mac and, excuse me, Congressman, Congressman. Councilman Wright and Councilman Mintz said, is that you, you at least open it up. We don't know if somebody's gonna step forward, and it may not be one of the two. But what you've done is you've said, "Look, we've offered, you know, full open, anybody who wants to run or do a write-in, they can." And it's not, and, and again, the expense seems like it's negligible, just to have it on it. It's pretty much gonna be a foregone conclusion. All right? And he can say, "Yes, I ran," you know, and he did, and he got votes, and the, and the city made the decision. Thank you.
Well, just for the record, I just want to make sure no one thinks that this is any slight against, Councilman Beldurain is not. I'm just looking at the perception of what, what this could say. It has nothing, you know, Steve is well-qualified for this job, and I hope he does get reelected. So that has nothing to do with that. This has nothing to do with that, the councilman that Stewart been talking about. Just want to make sure it's clear about that.
I agree, I think it should be open for a write-in candidate possibly, I think so. Then no one can say anything.
So then we need a motion, or?
Can I motion?
You sure can.
Can I motion and we keep the election open?
That you hold the election?
Hold the election.
I'll second that.
Okay.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beldurain and second by Mayor Pro Tem Mintz to hold the election for District One.
Councilmember Ogilvy?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Beldurain?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mintz?
Aye.
Mayor Klink?
Aye.
Approved five-o, to hold the election.
Okay. And we move on to number fifteen, appreciation for frontline businesses and workers.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item is in front of you this evening in consultation with all the council members about doing an appreciation, a, a thank you, if you will, in this resolution of all those difficult situations that both businesses have been in, the workers have been in, city employees have been in, and even businesses that haven't been able to open, just a, a little token, and it is a little token of appreciation. So, Mr. Mayor, kind of pulled up the, the resolution, if you want to kind of read it?
Okay. Thank you very much, City Manager. City of Twenty-Nine Palms City Council Resolution Number 2016. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Twenty-Nine Palms, California, recognizing workers and organizations that have served the community during the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas the City Council appreciates the organizations and employees within the City of Twenty-Nine Palms that have supplied products and services to our citizens. And whereas the mayor and council realize that providing these products and services were at potential health risk for the organization and employees. And whereas the City of Twenty-Nine Palms would like to formally recognize and thank all city organizations and employees for adapting to schedules and processes during the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas all city departments and employees have stepped up to face the uncertainty and have worked to adapt to our new normal for city operations. And whereas the city also realizes there are organization employees of businesses that are not allowed to open, and we thank them for their dedication towards the COVID recovery. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Twenty-Nine Palms, California, recognize workers and organizations that have served the community during the COVID-19 pandemic. Passed, approved, and adopted on the 25th day of August 2020. Signed by myself. And I just want to thank everybody. This has really been a tough time for everybody. We're at the end of August, and this started in March, and unfortunately, we have had a death in Twenty-Nine Palms. We've had forty-five confirmed cases in Twenty-Nine Palms, and to be honest with you, I think the citizens have done a fantastic job at keeping us low in our positive COVID-19 coronavirus. It's just a shame that we have to do the way we have to do it. We're hoping and praying that soon the governor will let us open up the rest of our businesses. And like Mr. Palmer said, maybe we need to start getting after him, but we've done that before, he's turned, he's turned right around and he's closed us right back up, so we gotta, we gotta keep trying, and we're hoping that maybe by the end of this, not this week, but next week, that we'll be able to open up our, our regular, our other businesses. But I just want to thank everybody, I want to thank the city staff for keeping us informed on what's going on here. Thank you to the radio and the newspaper also for their involvement in keeping us informed. Thank you, City Council. It's been a tough mayor year, so I just, I just want to thank you all very much for all your participation and backing and everything, so thank you. And if any of the other council members want to say anything, feel free. If not, we'll move on to number sixteen, tourism.
Any public comment?
Any public comment, I'm sorry.
And if the council wants to adopt that resolution?
Oh, we have to adopt it, okay. Anybody out there wish to comment on, on the prop, or the resolution I just read? We'll bring it back to council. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2016, acknowledging the appreciation the city council and the community have for our businesses and organizations during this COVID-19 pandemic.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Ogilvy?
Aye.
Councilmember Beldurain?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mintz?
Aye.
Mayor Klink?
Aye.
Approved five-o.
Number sixteen, Tourism Business Improvement District T-Bid Advisory Board Appointment. The T-Bid Subcommittee, myself and Councilmember Beldurain will make a recommendation to the City Council for the appointment for the T-Bid Advisory Board. Would you like to go ahead and do it? Mandy.
Well, she goes by Mandy.
Maria, Mandy.
Quinteros, I think?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, after we did our?
Quinteros.
What is it?
Quinteros.
Quinteros, okay. After we did our resume and our application review, and then we had our interviews process, I think Maria Quinteros is the nominee that we would like to nominate for that position, the T-Bid, Mandy.
Yeah, her official name is Maria, but she goes by Mandy.
Yeah, they threw us off when she came in, like, "We're not the lady."
And she was, and we'll, I'll, she was the only one that came in for an interview. The other one that we wanted to have an interview said that she, at this time, could not do it, so Mandy, I believe, was on the T-Bid before, but she had, she was just a young mother with kids, and now she's grown a little bit, she says, and she, she really wants to help the City of Twenty-Nine Palms, she looks forward to working with the other members of the T-Bid. So she's, she sounds like she's really gonna be dedicated to the T-Bid, so Brianna, I think you guys are gonna have a good one if the council agrees. So that is our motion.
Second.
I'll make the motion. Yeah. Huh? I'll move the motion. Oh, okay.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Mintz and seconded by Councilmember Wright to appoint Maria Mandy Quinteros, I don't have that tongue movement, I guess. For the, for the fifth spot on the T-Bid.
Councilmember Beldurain?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Ogilvy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mintz?
Aye.
Mayor Klink?
Aye.
Approved five-o.
We'll move on to future council-initiated items. Councilmember Ogilvy? Councilmember Beldurain?
Did we ever get anything back on that landlord with his issue?
Yeah, so staff is, actually, Monday, we met at the property with the landlord, with the tenant, and entered the property. You know, the, the issue was the, the tenant wasn't allowing the property owner to enter. And with, with that, the city could issue a, a citation for that, potentially based on the accusation could be a health and safety violation. However, the tenant did allow the staff to go in to inspect. There was no evidence of mold, and unfortunately, the power is disconnected, so there's not a health and safety issue currently. So at least at this point, again, it's pushed back to a civil issue between landlord and tenant. However, you know, just so the council is aware, the state of However, you know, just so the council is aware, the state of California is, at least as of today, lifting the prohibition on evictions as of September 2nd, which is next week. So, I think this, in this situation, the landlord was frustrated because the tenant wasn't probably paying rent, and, you know, was looking at the city to kind of help. Unfortunately, we could not. So, again, there was no health and safety issue.
Okay, Councilmember Wright?
I just want to remind everybody that it's still time to get counted on the 2020 census. That's very important to the city, so please get counted.
Mayor Pro Tem Mintz?
Not at this time, thank you.
All right, and I have nothing at this time as well. We'll go down to public comments. This is the time for the public to address the City Council on issues within the jurisdiction of the City Council that are not on this agenda. All comments are to be directed to the City Council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. There is a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you haven't already done so, please fill out your, out name and address slips and give them to the city clerk. The City Council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included on the printed agenda item, or printed agenda, I'm sorry. Public comments on specific agenda items will be deferred until consideration of the item on the agenda. Karen Harper?
Thank you. Hello, Mayor, hi, Council. My name is Karen Harper, and I'm from Twenty, um, excuse me, I live in Yucca Valley. But I am a landlord in Twenty, in Twenty-Nine Palms. I do have some property, and I'm bringing this to your attention, and I just kind of heard some things that the pandemic, what's going on with the pandemic and the evictions and things like that. I was just coming to the council to ask, is there any way possible that y'all can do an emergency fund for the landlords because we can't evict these tenants? And they're not weeding out the tenants that decided, oh, I don't need to pay, but yet they have nothing to do with the pandemic. They just choose not to pay. So, I understand that you do have money for the budget as far as business, but I was wondering if you can allocate that money for some of the landlords? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And then Ryan Palmer, you had already talked, or you... Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Then we'll move on to City Manager update.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple things, and, yeah, and to address the speaker in it, I think we spoke on the phone this past week, and, you know, the, and I confirmed it with the county, and, and as the council members are aware, we, we, we copied the same program as the county, just matched it. And I just confirmed with the county, and, and, you know, not, not meaning it's right or wrong, because this is a very difficult time, but the county is not, they don't have funds for the landlords in this type of situation. So, our program, which, which matches it does, unfortunately exclude the lady who just spoke, were getting into that situation. So, just wanted to give the council an update on that. As it relates to the COVID money that we did receive, we, I think we're almost ready to complete the goodie bags for our residents. I know I spoke to a couple council members, and I guess Mr. Mayor or any council members, as far as distribution of it, the city was looking at maybe just having them at the city for first-come, first-served. So, we'll do some social media blast and let people come in getting the goodie bags, which consisted of, think of gloves, hand sanitizer, disinfectant, the like for the individual households. We were just going to have it first-come, first-served unless the council wanted to physically hand them out as a date similar to, you know, kind of a Christmas giveaway. We were planning just to have them here first, first-come, first-served unless otherwise council wants to do it the distribution way. Solar, just to give you an update on our solar, our solar project went into effect this, this current year. The current year, meaning the fiscal year, July 1st, where are we at? Twenty nineteen through June of 20, in that timeframe, it was only a partial year. So, we generated about $30,000 of savings, and our payment, because this is our first year of our debt service, was about $30,000. So, it accomplished the goal in its first year, and I see it continuing that, which is self-funding those, those improvements. We're having a little housing boom that's kind of going on out there, interestingly. I know Brianna talked earlier about the economy and the TOT and the sales tax. Interestingly, though, the housing, housing is moving very quickly. Housing, the appreciation is rapidly increasing, very interesting. Is it tied to COVID? Is it tied to, you know, people exiting the urbanized areas, coming to the rural communities? That's something to keep an eye on, but there's definitely an increase of activity and value in, in the real estate market. Project Phoenix, just the update there. Probably everybody has seen the big heavy trucks in Project Phoenix area. The next phase of the project has begun, which is Southern California Edison, they're undergrounding. So, they've been down there putting in their, the large infrastructure in the ground. Next step would be is some trenching, finally, you know, doing the crossover to the connections to the businesses, then bringing down those poles that are those, and to, to eliminate that blight that is currently there with those poles. So, by the end of this calendar year, all of that will be complete. Then we move on to our next phase of Project Phoenix, which will be construction of the building, which is in February. So, we'll be bidding for it in November, December, this, this calendar year, with construction of the building starting early next year. So, Project Phoenix is continuing to move forward and progressing on, on, on track. And that's, that concludes my updates.
I'd like to see if we can get some other updates, though, on the, on the bridge project on Split Rock?
Yes. Councilmember Mintz, so, so currently, the bridge design, we're in, we're authorized, that bridge project is authorized. It's a federal project. It's a federal-funded project for bridges. Right now, because bridges around the country are oversubscribed, they're not letting any new projects in. So, we're in, we're authorized. So, we're in the design phase right now. We're about 65% design, and we're in somewhat of a standstill right now because the Donnell Basin, the county flood control has monies to improve the Donnell Basin, which intersects with our bridge. So, we're working out some particulars there of how much we do, how much they do in that intersection. So, we have a cooperative agreement that we're working with them on. Once we get that done, which is taking a little time, then we can finish our design of the project. Then at that point, once the design is done, apply for funding. Again, the bridge is authorized, they're not letting any other new bridge projects in. We just need to get the design done to then ask for the funding to construct, which is estimated about $3 million.
And the Burttec dumpster that we had at the city yard on the outside, could you kind of give everybody a little update on the, where the dumpster is now and how it to be used?
Yeah, so the dumpster is inside the yard right now. It used to be outside the yard. In consultation with Burttec, just, I know the council is aware, but for the public as well, we have a franchise agreement with Burttec, which means they have the exclusive agreement to haul our, our trash from the City of Twenty-Nine Palms. So, part of it is there, it's a violation to have that trash container out there for commercial use, and commercial use meaning people that would normally pay. So, contractors that have debris that they would normally pay to dispose, they can't dispose in that free dumpster. Those who have a commercial business, let's say, cleaning out an apartment, cleaning out a house, doing others' commercial activity that they normally would pay, was in violation of that franchise agreement. However, they are willing for Burttec to help us with illegal dumping. So, if that couch that's in the middle of the desert, unfortunately, those tires that are in the middle of the desert, unfortunately, those can be dumped into our, 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 a roll-off dumpster that's inside the yard, not outside the yard.
I don't know, maybe Travis can just kind of give a quick shout-out about your meeting on Thursday, and kind of reiterate the, the funding, where the money's coming for these parks. It seems, some folks seem that we're leveling, and we're going to add more taxes.
No, actually, the meeting, actually, this Friday, as a continuation of the meetings that we had last Thursday, is for the Pioneer Park planning. We continue to have these community engagements because we want to hear from the citizens before planners and architects start on the design, and that's, that's one of the requirements of, of the plan, of the program. It is a competitive grant program funded by Prop 68. Last year, you will call, council approved the pursuit for both Not Sky Park and Pioneer Park. In the last round of judging, we came up a little bit short on Not Sky Park, but we think it was a little bit based on the feedback that we got from the state and the debris. And so, the goal is to resubmit for Not Sky Park, amending and correcting, you know, some minor changes there, and then also to pursue Pioneer Park as well, as the council had authorized. This is the last round of the Prop 68 funding, probably not, will not be another proposition for, you know, last time it was 10 years. So, this is kind of our last shot. And so, we're working hard with Parks and Rec to put together a competitive application.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next park has to be an Indian Cove, I think. There's nothing over in that side of the, of the city. All right, is there anything else for the better of the City of Twenty-Nine Palms? Anybody out there? All right, then I will adjourn this meeting to September 16th.